Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're in the Board of Commissioners meeting. This is first Tuesday meeting. We do meet twice a month, first Tuesday. The third Thursday, first Tuesday at 6:00, Thursday at 5:00. You're welcome to attend those meetings. We also are being livestreamed for those who like to observe during the meeting or comfort their own home at their own time. So we welcome those persons too. We always ask our citizens to be engaged in the community and keep up what's going on. There's so much going on. Once again, the county is moving very rapidly. I'm going to go ahead and do this. We've come across leaving the ACC convention, which is a convention of county commissioners. And we sit and compare those with other commissioners. I can simply say to you that Liberty County is a blessed community. We got those with us, other commissioners all over the state. We appreciate the opportunity to serve and we appreciate the community God has given us to serve. So just had to go ahead and say that. Certainly, we are honored to be back and honored to serve. Mr. Brown has the meeting been properly upsized?
Yes, sir, it has.
Thank you so much. Mr. Hayes is here. Cheers, I acknowledge Mr. Brown. He will not leave us in our prayer. And I'll pledge allegiance, please stand now for the indication.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. Great day to be a Liberty County citizen. Let us bow our heads and go before the Lord. Father, we thank you on today for so many blessings that you bestowed upon us in this great county of ours. We ask now that as we go forth in this meeting that you would continue to bless us and watch over these great leaders, that you give them wisdom, that you would give them guidance, that you would give them understanding and compassion, and give them the things that they need, and keep them in good health as we go forth and grow this community in the way that you desire for it to grow. We give you this thanks and all praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. As you know, we've all asked that we approve our minutes coming through the month of April. Commissioners have had time to review those minutes. So the chairman, take a motion to...
So, Mr. Jim.
Second.
Motion and second, if we approve this from the month of April. Any questions? If you're in the hall in favor, please raise your right hand. Minutes for the month of April, we have our approval. Now, it's a special time that we take time to set aside to recognize employees. So this, at this meeting, we are recognizing employees who have served us for five to 10 years. So, Mr. Brown, if you would lead us in that effort, we appreciate it.
Yes, sir, thank you so much. It is, it's great to be able to do this again. You know, unfortunately, because of pandemic, we aren't be able to have our annual awards luncheon, but hopefully, we can get back to that quickly. These are actually for the past year. The first folks that we'd like to recognize on here are 10-year service award. Did you want to come down, sir?
I'm coming down.
No, you go ahead, age before beauty.
Come on, beauty.
The first 10-year service award is for Ms. Joanne Downs. Did Joanne make it?
She did not.
She did not. Thank you, Chief. The next person is...
Do you want to give Joanne a hand?
Yes.
Paul's not here either. Paul Martin.
Mr. Martin's not here. Shannon Everett. I wouldn't maybe do that. Not all of them, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Shannon is, yes. The other 10-year folks that are not with us, Rachel Costas, Corey Nadeau, who's also the chair, Catherine Poole, which is Kathy Poole, and Lakeisha Stevens. We're not able to be here tonight, so I wanted to make sure we mention their names. On the five-year service awards, the first person is Kevin Burgess.
Sir, folks, here we stand up. Attention, sir. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Ms. Darlene Gonzalez, she's with the Clerk of Courts. Mr. James Henry is actually with Public Works. Mr. Deontay Hickerson, and he's with the Recreation Department. That way, yes, sir. The last of the five years also here with us is Mr. Stephen Ryan. Stephen will actually be moving over to your Government Buildings Department in a few weeks.
Stephen? One, two, three. One, two, three. All right. LCRD turned out champions.
The others that were not able to be here with us for five years, Ms. Carla Hewitt, Matthew Henning, Earl Map, Shane Martin, and Joshua Tilly. And those are your five and 10-year folks.
All right, everybody smile. One, two, three. One, two, three.
How you doing? I know who that against me.
Been the wrong line of business.
That soup, man.
Oh, I knew so. I looked over there and I said, you must have got Lenny Darnes.
Southern gentleman, right there.
Every time she called me about that.
I know you got a strong head. Go with that.
Yeah, so see here, you ain't got no Panama jet.
I told you, I got your back, boss.
No fedoras.
Proclamation, beginning with EMS Week, Father's National Day of Prayer, and then Law Enforcement Appreciation.
Next week, we reserve May 15th through the 21st for National EMS Week. Established in 1974 by President Ford, this week was set aside to recognize all our brave women and men and women of emergency medical services. Every year, there is a theme that is celebrated. This year's theme chosen has been named Rising to the Challenge. This is appropriate considering what the last two years have brought forth, not to only EMS, but how all of our lives were affected by the COVID-19 pandemic. Life as we knew it was put on hold for nearly two years. We were encouraged to hide our smiles behind a mask, not to shake hands or offer a hug. Keeping your distance from one another was the new norm. No one prepared us for what we were about to encounter, but as always, we rose to the challenge and came out stronger than before. I'd like to take this opportunity to recognize those who supported each one of us from the day we'd all decided we wanted to become an EMT. These are the unheard heroes, and often the answers to our whys. The unheard-of heroes are the families holding down the home front while their loved ones are dedicating their time to strangers in need. Without support from their families, it would be difficult to face these challenges every day. Whether you are a mother, a father, a brother, a sister, spouse, or significant other, I thank you. If you are a son or a daughter, I thank you. As my own daughter is the face of many EMS children who have had parents miss out on milestone achievements, birthdays, and holidays, or maybe having to offer a comforting voice from just having a bad day, when their day themselves wasn't much better. These men and women show up for you as they continue to show up for their community. Continue to be proud of them, as I could not be more content with the occupation they chose. It takes a special person to do what they do, and there's no doubt they could not do this without the support from people like you. Behind all of our great medics is a family member encouraging them, answering the question to why they do what they want to do. To our medics, I thank you. Next week is all about you and what you represent. I know you are sometimes tired, and I know that the job isn't always easy, but I do want you to know that you and your families are valued. You all matter. Reflect on the lives you've touched. We all have a story. We all have made a legacy. We have all made a difference. Dr. Seuss has quoted, "To the world you are one person, but to one person you may be the world." And I think that speaks volumes. I will continue to be beside each one of you every step of the way as you have been beside me, making a better version of myself than I was the day before, at least most of the days. Continue to rise to the challenge, no matter how big or small, and just like always, you will conquer it all. Thank you.
This is a proclamation by the Liberty County Board of Commissioners for EMS Week, whereas emergency medical services are a vital public service, whereas the members of emergency medical service teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury, and whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important, out-of-hospital care, including preventive medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the emergency medical service system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, prehospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physician, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of emergency medical services teams with a career volunteer engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Service Week. Now therefore be it resolved that the Liberty County Board of Commissioners declare the week of May 15th through 23, 2022, as Emergency Medical Services Week with EMS Strong theme, "This is EMS, caring for our communities," so declared on this third day of May, 2022.
Crystal, Crystal, if you would just come to the edge of the stairs there. The other two, and we'll sign them all in succession. National Day of Prayer. Hang right there, Crystal.
This is a proclamation for National Day of Prayer. Whereas on this National Day of Prayer, we look to you. In the darkness, you are our light; in the storm, you are our anchor; in our despair, you are our hope; in our confession, you are our wisdom; in time of terrorism, you are our shield; in time of war, you are our peace; in time of uncertainty, you are the rock on which we stand. And whereas National Days of Prayer have been part of our country's heritage since the first one was declared by the Continental Congress in 1775. The law was amended in 1988 and signed by President Reagan to be the first Thursday of May each year. And whereas the National Day of Prayer was created by an act of Congress and is therefore intended for all people of faith to pray to the God of their understanding. And whereas prayer has helped pull people through struggles and fears of every kind and also serves as a wonderful way to express love, gratitude, and concern, whether in private or amongst family and friends. Throughout our nation's history, leaders have urged citizens of faith to pray for our land and those who defend our freedom at home and abroad. For many, prayer is a part of their daily lives, and today, we join together across our country in uniting in prayer. And now therefore I, Donald L. Lovett, Chairman of the Liberty County Board of Commissioners, do hereby recognize May 5th, 2022, as National Day of Prayer in Liberty County and urge all citizens to take part in this event and participate fittingly in its observance. Signed on the third day of May, 2022.
Hayes, if you want to come and send your invite. If you just come to stand behind Crystal.
I will. Just want to invite everyone out to come out on this Thursday. We'll be over at First United, Heinzville First United Methodist Church, right down the street on the corner on the circle, 11:30 a.m. for the National Day of Prayer. We've got several pastors that'll be coming in and that'll be speaking and leading us in words of prayer for our community, for our schools, for our nation, and various things that are affected by the prayers. The Bible reminds us that the effectual fervor in prayer of the righteous avails much, so we believe that, we stand on that, and we believe that prayer is vital to our community. So we invite everyone to come out on this Thursday, 11:30, at Heinzville First United Methodist Church.
Law Enforcement Appreciation Week.
Yes, sir, this is a proclamation in recognition of Law Enforcement Appreciation Week, May 11th through the 17th, 2022. Whereas Liberty County law enforcement officials and public safety officers are brave and dedicated individuals who protect our citizens, families, and our communities here in Liberty County. And whereas these men and women serve on the front lines of public safety, are prepared to face uncertainty and danger for the sake of protecting our neighbors. And whereas Liberty County's law enforcement officials and public safety officers face intense challenges and make profound sacrifices to ensure the safety of all citizens and play a critical role in keeping us safe and putting themselves at risk during the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas law enforcement officials face increased scrutiny, yet continue to perform their duties with dignity and honor. And whereas Liberty County continues to train and develop the best law enforcement officers and public safety officials, and because of their hard work and devotion, Liberty County remains a safe and welcoming county in which to live, work, and play. And whereas the service of the Liberty County Sheriff and his dedicated team helps maintain our county's well-being, these individuals provide an invaluable service and should be recognized for their commitment and bravery. Now therefore be it resolved, the Liberty County Board of Commissioners do hereby recognize Liberty County Sheriff's Office and encourage us all residents to recognize and appreciate the outstanding service provided by our sheriff, his deputies, and staff to our community. Furthermore, the Liberty County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims the week of May 11th through 17th, 2022, as a law enforcement week in Liberty County. It witnessed therefore I, Donald L. Lovett, have unto set my hand and call the seal of the county to be affixed this second day of May in the year of our Lord, 2022. That was actually typed yesterday, so.
Thank you. Sheriff.
We'd just like to say thank you for everything that the Commissioners do for us and our citizens. We enjoy our job. We wouldn't do it for the just to pay. We do it because we have passion and concern for our citizens, our children, and we want our neighborhoods to be safe, for everybody to come and enjoy Liberty County and feel like they are protected. So thank y'all and thank the community for all the support, and we really appreciate them.
Sheriff, if you will be able, if you want to bring your support team, you can, just a second. But, Crystal, if you'll come around, we'll start with you. We'll do a photo op, Commissioners, if you'll come in.
I don't think they want to stand up with you. They might don't want to be recognized.
One at a time? All right, Commissioner.
He's so short.
That was the idea.
One, two, three, smile. One, two, three, smile again. This one? National Day of Prayer. All right. All right, everybody, smile. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you.
He got your back.
Somebody come up here.
We need to move down this way, sir?
Stand by my county commissioner.
All right.
Hey, hello.
Can you see?
Now.
Count to three. One, two, three.
Chicken feet.
One, two, three.
Go dogs.
Say good tigers.
One more. All right. One, two, three. One, two, three.
I hope you, hey. Mr. Mo, I hope night when you go to sleep, you don't count one, two, three.
Y'all let us sleep at night.
I don't have any opposition. Justice taken care of.
I heard that. Hey, Flash.
Thank you, all of our public safety people.
Because of what you all do, we're able to sleep at night. Thank you.
Crystal, and whatever you do, you help us wake up at night.
He said whatever.
You help us wake up.
Don't sleep too long.
Donald, would you ever, EMT?
No, sir.
Ride that wagon?
I didn't do that.
What is that sitting back there?
In the old days, I would ride with them, but the laws changed and we couldn't do it anymore.
I can see that gentleman right there with them glasses and that little girl. Who is that?
Thank you, sir.
On that end right there. That hurt?
LCPC, if you will, please. Resoning petitions? Need to go into public hearing?
Yes, sir, please.
Chair, take a motion to go out of...
Don't move, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Second. All in favor, raise your right hand, please. We're now in public hearing. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. You all have been busy lately.
We sure have. Jeff couldn't be here, so he asked me to come and fill in, so you guys bear with me.
You'll do fine.
Today I have a petition that was initiated by the LCPC to rezonate 137.21 acres of land from R3 and B1 and A1 to AR1. About 9.6 acres, more or less, was already zoned AR1. You guys actually approved this at last month's meeting. So the rest of this I'll talk about, just the remaining portion of the property. About 5.3 acres, more or less, is to be rezoned from B1 to AR1, and the remaining acreage is approximately 127 acres to be rezoned from A1 and R3 to AR1. The R3 and the B1 zoning occurred in 2006 for townhomes in a small commercial strip along Lewis Frazier Road. The next slide just shows we had to put out the legal ads and our signs, the rezoning sign, posted there on Lewis Frazier. The next slide pretty much is just the vicinity map showing the property. Of course, this piece here is what you guys already did. The next slide just shows the current zoning, and you can see the lighter green area is the AR1, and the little pink strip there is the B1, and the yellow is the R3, which they're wanting to conform it with the AR1, which is all in the area. The next, we have the zoning analysis, and I'll just go through this quickly with you. Yes, the property has reasonable economic value, is currently zoned. Yes, it conforms with JLS. Does the property use conform to the Liberty County Comprehensive Plan? No, the future land use maps showed this area as residential, high-density, and commercial due to that 2006 rezoning that I mentioned earlier. This property would not have an adverse effect on the value and usability of nearby properties. Yes, the proposed use is suitable view of nearby uses. And no, it would not create an undue burden on transportation, streets, transit, schools, or utilities. This would not allow a short-term gain at the expense of our local and long-term goals. No, this would not create a domino effect. Next one is no, we do not know of any historical sites which would be adversely impacted. This parcel is in a flood zone. It is not considered spot zoning. And are there any unique conditions which support approval or denial? Yes, the R3 and the B1 districts are not compatible with the surrounding agricultural areas that's already in place there.
is that where the, where's the project going in there for, that Josh Wheeler come in here for?
It's further back up.
Oh, it's further up? Which way?
It's staying in the work, hold on just a minute. Right back up in here.
So, it joins that piece right there now?
Yes.
Well, I, I remember back Lloyd Murray was here, and he wanted it zoned for, I think it was going to be condominium, I mean condominiums or something, and, because we had talked to him about maybe go, I think there was some, an interest in question at the church.
Right.
And he said, I'm going a little bit further down and put my road in, and I do remember that part about it, but I don't never remember nothing going back there but some houses. But was it zoned at one time away for?
Well, could you be referring to the '06?
The '06.
Zoning, that, that strip, they had zoned for townhomes and a small commercial strip. That's why.
Is that considered, what zoning is that?
Well, the R3 is townhomes, and the B1 would be the commercial, if that's what you're asking.
Yeah, but what is the commercial part that's, what was it going to be, the yard? I don't remember.
Like, the use of it?
Oh, the use of it? Okay, all right.
Well, they said it's like a commercial, I would say a strip mall, I don't know, just, well, I don't know, because it says just a commercial strip.
It never didn't come to pass.
No, no. The only thing, he got it rezoned and cleared it.
They didn't really say what, that little pink piece right there is the only piece that's commercial.
The only thing that I remember about the whole issue was there was just a little bit of comments made by some of the folks that went to the church about going in and out. They were going to be going in and out, and I think he, he said, I'm going to be coming in and out a little bit further down.
Ah, I did it again.
I don't remember if Commissioner Stevens was there, but I believe we, we were a little concerned about the curve.
Talking about Solomon Temple?
Solomon Temple is, uh, Solomon Temple is right here.
Right, yeah. But, I mean, he had his gate going in on the, down there closer to that pink piece.
Right, right, right in that pink.
Yeah. So, I mean, he, he, he had satisfied the question that, that I remember, I don't know, I, I, I just wondered if that touched that piece, and I guess it does, the piece that the bribe's on, that now they're going to put houses in there?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, because Mr., you know, Duncan owns all of, oops, sorry about that, all of, you know, all of it, except, and he cut this piece out for his home.
Mm-hmm.
But all the rest of it, he just wanted it, or mentioned for agricultural use.
Okay, all right.
Yeah. See, he's, he's, see, Mrs. Duncan's not here.
Got a question.
No, sir.
Got a question for her.
Yes, ma'am.
Did you have any opposition?
No, sir.
Okay. Yeah, I remember the conversation when he was here before, we said, why not wait and do it all in one time, but he wanted a peace milit, so here we are.
Yes, sir.
All right.
Ready for a motion?
Yes, sir.
Chair, I make a motion that we follow the recommendation of LCPC.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Motion and second. We approve LCPC's recommendation of this rezoning with standard conditions. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. All right.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Motion to go out of public hearing, back into regular session.
Second.
All in favor? Back into regular session. Thank you, ma'am. All right. Into government agreement, Public Facilities Authority.
Who is this?
If you folks remember at your last meeting, you authorized your participation issuance of bonds by the Public Facilities Authority to help finance the fire departments and some solid waste improvements, and now you authorized Ameris to set the rates and terms of that bond. Those have been set, and so now this resolution is just some house cleaning, where you folks are ratifying those rates and terms, and approving your contract with Ameris and the Public Facilities Authority. As you folks know, the Board of Commissioners will be pledging revenue in order to support the bonds so they can be issued. So, this is just house cleaning after your last approval, and those bonds should be validated May 16th by the Superior Court, and the bonds will be issued probably that week or the week after. So, everything is in order. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but I think most of the specifics of the bond issue were discussed at your last meeting.
What was it, what was the total amount?
It's a $12.5 million maximum bond issue. So, you know, the exact amount will depend upon the needs of the projects.
At what rate?
The final rate?
Wow, I'm trying to remember, Kim's on here, 3.29, I do believe.
It's odd, something, yeah.
Very good interest rate, especially with increasing rates these days.
Kelly, you mentioned just a few things there. Was our water expansion that we were looking at, or are we going, is this going?
No, sir.
With it, or are we going to still be looking for a grant?
No, sir, we got, you know, those are funded through the ARPA grants.
Right.
We won't need to borrow on those. This is just for the EMS and fire station projects.
It's the only thing?
Yes, sir.
What about the, uh, solid waste?
Oh, I'm sorry, and, and there was a solid waste issue. It'll be paid out of solid waste, yes, a very small piece for solid waste.
Somebody over here said gum branch.
Is the, I don't know, I, was, how about the elections office, that's what ARPA?
No, sirs, I mean, it's not, that's, a project hasn't been designed yet. The next things that should come to you would be your health department and your road department, that would be combined in your next bond, probably.
All right.
Questions, Chair?
Yes, sir.
Just for everyone, that clarification. With these bonds, the anticipation of the one cent sales tax is how it's going to be repaid?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And of course, I think everybody knows with the public as well, these bonds are issued in anticipation of those revenues, so the county can go ahead and make these necessary public improvements, perhaps ahead of that revenue schedule. I think if you folks just discussed, you're in, I think, great need of fire departments and these other improvements, so it'll allow you to construct those, without having to wait on the revenue from the sales tax to come in.
Now, just for the public ears.
Yes, sir.
We need to put it out there that if the one cent sales tax don't pass, where everything will be sitting at?
Yes, well, I mean, by, by entering into this contract, you'd have an obligation to continue to pay.
Right, but where would the money, where would the funding come from if the one cent sales tax don't pass?
Well, it would have to be funded through your general revenue or other funds.
Which is property tax.
Yes, sir. And that's what, that's what the government agreement does. It pledges your, your tax revenue to ultimately support the bonds. Of course, in 100% of the cases, the bonds you've entered into previously, all those have been paid and satisfied with the 1% sales tax. Not going away. I think Kim's, Kim's projections are that the 1% sales tax will at least exceed this amount, but I think the amount.
Or exceed, yeah.
Allocated for the SPOSS projects.
Joey, did your best guess on this dollar amount with sales tax, what is that, two years out? I mean, can you pay it, pay that off in two years out?
Well, the bonds were actually financed for a, for 12 years. They're actually 12-year bonds, so the anticipation was that you'd pay half of it during this sales tax and half during the next sales tax, if you, and you're going to be talking about the sales tax tonight. So, if you want to accelerate that, that's the reason we put that eligibility. So, if you want to decide you want to pay it off quicker, you can allocate more in the sales tax ballot to do it. The sales tax itself will generate, you know, about $69 million that has to be distributed among various projects.
In various cities.
Correct, yes, sir.
And you can satisfy the bonds prior to the scheduled maturity, if you like, as well, but I don't think that.
Well, I don't know if we'll find it cheaper. I mean.
No, you won't.
The way things are now.
No, you won't.
Not, not at a three-point.
Yeah, yeah. All right. Chair, entertain a motion then.
Let me move, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion and second. We approve the, um, government agreement for Public Facilities Authority to fund the bonds for EMS, fire, and gum branch transfer station. As we very well know, many, some years ago, we identified these as must-haves for our county, certainly to complete what we're trying to do for our comprehensive fire plan and our new EMS facility, because sort of needed, they're in a dilapidated, is that a good word? Close to it, it's chosen down in Midway, and then the work we're going to do at the gum branch transfer station, so.
Mr. Chairman, how many people do we appoint on the facilities board?
I don't know what that membership.
Five.
Is it five?
I think it's five.
And each city has?
I'm not sure it's even by, Joey, the facilities authority, it's not by city.
It's not by cities.
No, no, sir.
It's just open.
The county, the county appoints those facilities.
Generally, people with business backgrounds.
But I'm just saying, do we have some from each city?
No.
No, sir. Oh, do y'all have, I'm sorry.
We do have one in Waldauville that's on the facilities board, right?
I'm not sure, and I don't want to misspeak.
I'm not sure where they live, all of them.
I can see faces, but I don't know about.
You do have one, I do know where, that's you, right.
Waldauville?
Mr. Rogers lives Waldauville.
Okay, yeah. One definitely lives in town.
Yeah, I'm not sure where the other.
Two in the city of Hydesville.
None from the east end.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Yeah, but it's a application process where we have.
Well, I was wondering, because I have looked at some of the applications, and I just encourage that if you know people that want to be on that, to understand this is a, it's pretty mind-boggling and important, so.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Let's just make sure we're getting some good folks on there.
Yeah, all right. Do we vote?
I've made the motion, I don't know.
We have a motion and a second, but I don't.
All, all in favor, raise your hand, all right. Thanks, sir. Road abandoned a minute?
Yes, sir. If you folks want to turn to the fourth page from Ian, that's the best place to start. It's an exhibit showing two right-of-way. But if you remember at a, at a prior meeting, the board approved the rezoning of certain property in the southeast quadrant of 95, and so Trent has been working with developers' engineers to try and design a more orderly access to the property. If you'll see, their property is currently served by the Dorchester Road, the first Dorchester Road, when you, when you cross over the interstate, as I think everybody knows, that's an unpaved dirt road, and so what Trent has discussed with the developers is relocating that portion of Dorchester Road to the spot shown on the exhibit, which will in the future line up with access to property across the road whenever that's developed, and will probably invite a signal there at some point to ensure that everything is safe, but I'll leave traffic control to Trent. But in conversations with their engineer, this has been agreed by the developers as something they'd be willing to do, and again, it provides relocation of that portion of Dorchester Road, and the developers at their cost will construct a paved right-of-way, together with all related improvements for drainage, stormwater, traffic control, so that the county will essentially swap its interest in this dirt road for a new paved right-of-way that will serve this property. And so, it's not technically an abandonment, what the county will be doing is relocating this portion and simply swapping the two parcels, one for the other. Once this roadway is completed, that'll be constructed at sole cost to developer, the county will have no cost in connection with the project, and then once that's constructed in accordance with county specs and approved by county engineer, that will be transferred to the county as well as the, actually, this relocated roadway is not in the city of Midway, but the portion to be relocated is, so if you'll see, that's in a second, the agreement that'll actually be between the county, the developer, and the city of Midway. So, both the county and the city will relocate and discontinue use of this dirt road, and the new paved constructed roadway will be wholly within the county incorporated limits. And this, this relocation exchange is specifically authorized by state law, and so what I've done is simply have a resolution whereby the board approves the chairman to enter into an agreement that he approves, as approved by me, as prepared by me, and a draft is attached to this, and then the process of construction of the road and the eventual relocation abandonment will begin. But of course, the county won't relocate the road, the unpaved portion, until the new roadway is completed and deeded to the county. So, again, it's probably more confusing, or less confusing than I've made it sound, but again, this is done, Trent's recommendation, to ensure more orderly, more orderly access to the property, and if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. If there are questions related to engineering, we can postpone the decision and let Trent discuss that with you, but I'll be happy to answer any questions you might, you might have.
Mr. Chairman, I had one. Mr. Davis, I would assume that the, the new road is all on the developer's property?
It is.
So, he's not encroaching on anyone?
No, ma'am. And as well as the portion of, of the dirt road of Dorchester Village, which will be relocated, all the property on both sides of that roadway are owned by the owner as well.
Okay, and the current dirt road, who will plant, is somebody going to plant that back in grass, or?
That's, that's an issue for the developer.
The developer, okay.
I think their plan is to use that for their future development, but the county and the city of Midway are only going to transfer whatever interest they have in the roadway, and in the county's case, that's merely an easement.
Okay.
Because, so you're not warranting that you have exclusive rights to that roadway, so if there are any private rights that other third parties might have, the developer will have to address those as well. But all you and the city are doing is saying, hey, whatever rights we have into this roadway, we're relinquishing.
Okay, okay.
When we heard the offer, we thought it was good.
Yeah, for a paved road.
And he's willing to do that.
And I think the dimensions are going to be agreed upon, but I think Trent indicated it's going to be at least 100-foot right-of-way.
Right, that's what it's saying here.
Yes, sir.
How wide was the old one? I'm looking for that, but I don't see it.
Dorchester Village Road?
Yeah.
Oh, I do not know.
I mean, according to the drawing here, it looks like almost the same, but that doesn't.
Yeah, it's, you know, this, most of this roadway, the county doesn't even have written easement to, it's simply by virtue of our maintaining over the years, we have a prescriptive easement for roadway purposes, so really, that right-of-way, it's really as wide as that paved area in most places.
Because I know once you go around that first curb, it, it tightens up, but this one, the new one, we will have full rights to it.
Yes, once it's, they have to complete it in accordance to county specs, once Trent approves it, of course, they'll give the standard warranties and bonds for two years to ensure that it's been constructed appropriately, and then once that's done, it will be. It is.
So he's not encroaching on anyone?
No, ma'am. And as well as the portion of, of the dirt road of Dorchester Village, which will be relocated, all the property on both sides of that roadway are owned by the owner as well.
Okay. And the current dirt road, who will plant, is somebody going to plant that back in grass, or?
That's, that's an issue for the developer.
The developer, okay.
I think their plan is to use that for their future development. But the county and the city of Midway are only going to transfer whatever interest they have in the roadway. In the county's case, that's merely an easement.
Okay.
Because, so you're not warranting that you have exclusive rights to that roadway. So if there are any private rights that other third parties might have, the developer will have to address those as well. But all you and the city are doing is saying, hey, whatever rights we have into this roadway, we're relinquishing.
Okay, okay.
When we heard the offer, we thought it was good.
Yeah, for a paved road.
And he's willing to do that.
And I think the dimensions are going to be agreed upon, but I think Trent indicated it's going to be at least 100-foot right-of-way.
Right, that's what it's saying here.
Yes, sir.
How wide was the old one? Do you, I'm looking for that, but I don't see it.
Dorchester Village Road?
Yeah.
Oh, I do not know.
I mean, according to the drawing here, it looks like almost the same, but that doesn't.
Yeah, it's, you know, this, most of this roadway, the county doesn't even have written easement to. It's simply by virtue of our maintaining over the years, we have a prescriptive easement for roadway purposes. So really, that right-of-way, it's really as wide as that paved area in most places.
Because I know once you go around that first curb, it, it tightens up.
Mm-hmm.
But this one, the new one, we will have full rights to it.
Yes, once it's, they have to complete it in accordance to county specs, once Trent approves it. Of course, they'll give the standard warranties and bonds for two years to ensure that it's been constructed appropriately. And then once that's done, it will be transferred to the county, will have fee simple title, that's, will have full title to the roadway.
Okay.
Subject to, you know, there or any other person's right to install utilities in the roadway as, as is normal.
My only concern is that, Chairman, the trucks are going to be using that, that road. We want to just make sure that it's, a safety issue is in there going to those warehouses. So it won't take away from the citizens that live down that road, won't put them in a harm's way.
I don't know if that was Trent's objective when he designed the relocation. And of course, the, you know, the roadway will be designed as such to accommodate heavier traffic as well.
Okay.
And rather than your typical one-year warranty, there's going to be a two-year warranty on this project.
He was going to install a, lack of better word, a turnaround, remember that?
Yeah, remember, one, one time it was mentioned to me to, to have it where that, you would block off Dorchester Village Road coming up to it, but that, that was not a good idea at all.
No.
Um, because that's one way of getting out if you have something happens, certain part of that Island Highway, at least from there, so.
And the goal was not to interfere with any property owner who might live along Dorchester Village Road. So this relocation does not, as I mentioned, the portion to be discontinued is owned, the surrounding property is owned entirely by the developer. So I, I don't anticipate any adverse consequences, I can't see anything wrong with the proposal.
Okay.
But anyway, the agreement fully protects the county as well as the city of Midway.
I wanted to mention something, and of course, Commissioner Stevens can look at it there, but there's not any curb cuts on this, Joey, and commissioners between Island's Highway and the curb. So, you know, that'll be things that'll be added later because they've already acquired that other property from what you're saying.
No, they've owned, I think this was, I, I don't have the rezoning in front of me, but I think the property that's shown, that's surrounding the, the, the current Dorchester Village, that's property that's already owned by the developer.
But I'm just saying, if you've got, if you've got ramps there, that'll be, see, there's nobody accessing out between these two, from, from where the, the road is now down there. It's just a straight road until you get in here, you don't have no residents. But I can see up here on this piece where you may have curb cuts with vehicles going into this property.
And, and it's kind of hard to tell from this survey, but if you see the first kind of highlighted area.
Right.
And then you see kind of a gap in between this area, as well as this area, its property is owned by the developer. But this gap is already part of the public right-of-way. So even though it looks like it might be a curb cut, what's proposed is that the turn lane will occupy all of this location. It will, it will begin at the highlighted portion, it will, it will extend through the gap, and then over into the other portion that leads to the new.
Okay, but you see where it says Track Four, Kelly, 5.0 acres? Between L-31 on that, all the way back up to Island's Highway, there's no access to Track Four. There's no curb cut, so that's the only thing that, you know, it, it now belongs to, like you said, to the developer.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know if he's planning on, if he's planning on coming out there or not, you know, to go back toward Island's Highway.
You mean, are you talking about?
Come on down, come on down the new road, right there. See, there's no curb cuts where they come out of that piece of property there, that acreage, onto the road. So, I mean, I agree with the road itself, what you're talking about, but I just want to make sure everybody is involved where, you know, when they do get there, they're going to have to access that road.
Yes.
Which we're saying belongs to us, so we want to make sure that, you know, that we have input if we need to have input.
Um, y- y- yes, sir, and if you remember, all you did was rezone, so he's still got to come back to you with a site plan. And that's where he's got to show his projected curb cuts on that site plan. So that's still got to come back to you.
Right, but the road itself has already been established as a 100-foot right-of-way?
Yes, sir. Well, yeah, you're just looking at the meets and bounds of the right-of-way here, so his curb cuts will have to, you know, match up.
Okay.
With that right-of-way, yes, sir. But you'll get a chance to look at all that.
Back, back there, because I'm going to remember it.
He'll have to show you his, his stormwater detention and everything, that development plan.
But, but you're right, obviously. I mean, this, this roadway will serve property on either side of it.
Right.
All right, Stevens.
Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the exchange of the old Dorchester Village Road, that section, for the new one, which will be paved, with whatever necessary changes have to be made.
And if you'd like, Mr., Commissioner Stevens, you could amend it by saying as approved in the resolution before you. I've made it easy for you. I prepared a resolution that the board can adopt.
Include it.
I just want to add something to that.
Go ahead.
We did decide that that road does in fact belong to us, Joey?
That's what Kelly mentioned. It was actually acquired through prescriptive right-of-way, not through actual deed of ownership. So to the extent that there's any outstanding doubt as to our ownership, it would be upon the developer to establish that.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
But, but as part of this transaction, the city and the county will quitclaim. You know, a quitclaim is a deed where the, the grantor makes no warranties to title. So whatever interest you have, which in this case is an easement, you'll transfer to the owner so that the public's right to use the roadway will be extinct. As I mentioned, whatever rights any private person might have, that's an issue for the developer to worry about.
All right.
I'll second the motion, we've got all that square.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor, raise your hand, please. All right.
Just to analyze that a little bit, I just don't want us giving away somebody else's property.
No.
We call that.
And a full, a full title search will be made prior to the actual transfer as well. And again, all those costs are paid for by the developer. County.
Which is very rare.
But we've, we've got a building in Briar Bay, we ain't never figured out who owns it.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you. Contract GAS Services.
Mr. Stanley is not able to be here tonight, but this is basically a.
Mike's here.
Well, yeah.
We handle them.
I'm going to put that on him.
He's just as good as he is.
Uh, but this is a renewal of our GAS agreement with CRC. You may remember Mr. Hunter Key coming last year, going to explain the, the Mars system, the mapping system, regional-wide. In addition to that, they also help us do the addressing to our locations now that it's on maps and digitized for that. So this is simply a renewal of that. You see, actually on page three, the same task outline, anticipated amounts not to be exceeded with estimated hours for each project type.
Mr. Brown, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Brown. So if we need a map, we have to go through, what's, what would be the process?
You, you'll come through us, you'll just come through our IT department. We, we, yes, sir, they don't have to do that for us. And basically then we can, we will pull that information off the database. Just to establish new points on the map and help address those areas that have overlapping addresses that are problem areas.
Renewal contract with CRC.
Yes, sir, Ms. Chairman, I make a motion, we approve the contract with CRC.
Second.
Motion and second, we approve the contract presented with CRC for GAS services, which we have been privy to several years. It serves, serves us very well. Any further discussion? All in favor, let them, by raising your right hand, please. You know, propose it, all right. Thank you, sir. All right. ARPA small business grants. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Board. Mr. Chair, the county was awarded ARPA funds from the Department of Treasury. And last year, y'all made some decisions about how you wanted to spend those funds. Y'all allocated funds to assist some of the small businesses and nonprofits that were affected by COVID-19. Y'all budgeted $100,000 for businesses, and y'all did $25,000 for nonprofits. And y'all asked us to design a process by which we could solicit applications, and we did. You guys approved the contract with the United Way of Coastal Empire to be the conduit, the entity that would receive those applications. And we worked with them with the application that we designed, and they did all the graphics, and they put it on, they designed a portal, and they linked it to our website. And they used the timeframe of March the 1st to April 15th. And people went on site, and we also had paper copies that they could go by the office to get copies of it, of the application. On last, on the week after, about two weeks ago, we received those applications from the, from the United Way of Coastal Empire. We received 25 applications, which was broken down into 17 businesses and eight nonprofits. The coastal, United Way, they looked through them and, and they made, they vetted to make sure they were thorough. Four were disqualified because, A, they had no business license, and there was two of them that were disqualified because of that. One was disqualified because no tax documents were provided. And a third was, a fourth was, was knocked out because they were not in business during the 2029, 2019, 2020 session. What we did, if you look on, if I can move this, you'll notice there, and highlight, and it's also on your paper there, that the key criteria, one of the major criterias that we looked at was loss of income. And we had a lot of healthy discussion for about three or four meetings in terms of, of, of what was loss of income. But we went back and we looked at each of their businesses for the nonprofit, we looked at their non-profit form. And then for the for-profit, we looked at their, and you can see it on your, because you can hardly see it here, you can look at their.
1120.
Schedule C.
Yes, sir, Schedule C, and then the, my other form.
1120.
Yeah, the 1120. So we looked at those forms, and you noticed the areas, we looked at income. We looked at income. That was the criteria we looked at. Did they lose income? So five, five businesses, or five nonprofits, rather, recorded loss of income and met the criteria. Three nonprofits recorded no loss of income. Six businesses for profit recorded loss of income and met the criteria, and seven businesses for profit recorded no loss of income. Out of that, we recommend the following, that six businesses be awarded a grant at the exact cost, I mean, the exact amount of their loss, or if they were, had more than $15,000, to be, to be awarded grants up to $15,000, totaling an amount of $53,000 for all six of those awards. And then for the five nonprofits, now, now for the businesses, that was money of $100,000, that was a part of $100,000. For nonprofit, that was a part of $25,000. So we recommend that the five nonprofits be awarded a grant of $5,000 each for a total of $25,000. And all of the nonprofits had losses more than $5,000.
Mr. Mosley, how did you know if they had a loss? Did you look at the previous, I mean, you said you looked at their income on these, did you?
Two years.
Two years prior to? Okay, got it.
Nineteen.
Okay. Okay, okay.
I have to ask you this question, were the.
Yes, sir.
Were the instructions clear upfront? I would think if I didn't have a business license, I would not have applied.
Uh, sir, it's on the sheet right here.
Yes, sir. They were, and, and just to go one step further, United Way did reach out to even those that were lacking documentation.
Mm-hmm.
Say, you know, you didn't provide it, can you please provide it? And we're given a time to provide it, and either did, either could not provide it or did not provide it. So it didn't just cut off on one day, and, you know, there were calls, some follow-up calls made.
This one looks a little bit, little bit easier than the one that they came out with at the beginning for businesses to apply for. It was a lot more in-depth than what you had to provide and dig up for proof.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
So I'm glad we got the ARPA enabled to help these folks out.
So we have, the burden of proof is on the business?
Yep.
The nonprofit, or is it us?
So at the end of the day, the, the burden of proof on the dispersment of ARPA funds is on the government agency that disperses it.
Which is us.
Which is us. And that's why, that's why the tax documents were requested. And at the end of the day, by, by choosing to do income or revenue versus net profit or loss, you're able then, if you have to be audited, I feel like you'd be able to get from those businesses income receipts, cash register receipts, amount, say, reported to Department of Revenue, whatever it was, versus bringing in the expense category of it and have to try to gather vehicle receipts or receipts for machinery purpose. So, so the, the method you chose for income or revenue would be the easiest to substantiate in the.
That's true.
Well, and Commissioner Giller and I was riding, and we were talking about ARPA funds, and it's, it's going to be great for a lot of people. But, you know, there's folks right now that's already been in the jail or fixing to go to jail because of the way they've tried to manipulate the system. And I just want to make sure, I mean, I, I have all the confidence in the world in you three, and y'all are the ones that's counting the beans. But I just want to make sure that if you're comfortable and you're not comfortable, you know, if there's something funny about it, let's all get together and talk about it. But, uh, I mean, the nonprofits, I, I help nonprofit, different ones, and I just know they went through some tough times, but let's.
Make sure.
Let's do what we can do, and, and like Commissioner Stevens says, let's make sure that we, you know, all you got to do is goof up one time with somebody else's money, especially the federal governments. They send people with big badges, big as a coffee can. I've seen them, wonder what they look like. What do we need, Mr. Chairman?
We just, we just simply need a motion to accept the dispersments for the, out of the ARPA fund for small businesses and nonprofits as recommended.
Uh, Ms. Chair, before you, before we go with a, with a motion with this, just a quick question. So a total of how many businesses, small businesses are, are getting, is that six?
Six, yes, sir.
Okay. And that's at $15,000 each, right?
Up to.
Up to.
But not to exceed their actual loss in income.
Okay.
There's three that are getting 15, and the other three are getting their actual loss.
That's correct.
Which was less than 15.
That's correct.
Right.
Okay. Because I, I know when we all met about that, I know we were trying to put, make sure that we put some money aside. So after we, I guess, approve these from the small businesses and the nonprofits, which I totally agree, they need it, is how much money will we have left over for small businesses and nonprofits? That'd be it?
I think Kim's already, no, sir. It won't, it won't deplete that. I believe there was 60-something thousand dollars out of the small business.
Probably, probably another $40,000 left.
Forty-seven.
Forty-seven thousand left, and we're dispersing all of the 25. So there's about $47,000 left from this year's allotment.
Okay. Okay, that's only, because I remember when we all met.
Right.
That's what.
Okay.
You already know where I'm at, there we go. I, I just wanted to make sure that, you know.
So we can add the 47 on to that.
Or you can do something else.
Or do something, okay.
Right, I just wanted to make sure, Ms. Chair, that, you know, we do in the future have other small businesses and, and nonprofits that are, if they qualify, that they get, get opportunity to, to get some help and support from us.
Mr. Mosley, the ones that apply on this, can they come back?
There's nothing prohibitive from coming back, but again, they would have to turn in the same character documents, only it would be for 2021.
2021.
And obviously, at least, I can't remember, seven of them that probably won't qualify.
And Commissioner Stevens, what we would do is y'all would reauthorize a second round with whatever amounts you wanted. And if you wanted to establish criteria for the next one, whether they got it and could get it, or whatever you want to do. You, you'll be setting those requirements.
Okay.
Yes, sir. We did not, I think it's safe to mention this, we did not, if you remember. We did not, I think it's safe to mention this, we did not, if you remember, even though we asked them to identify whether they had gotten other governmental sources, they were not discounted or thrown out because they had. So, so ours would be in addition to any other sources. Of course, they would have counted those sources in those IRS reports. And so we, it would be taken into account. In other words, they still would have shown a loss, even with the other assistance they got.
All right.
I just want to ensure that we maximize the use of these funds.
Absolutely.
For other worthy organizations.
Right.
Whether they're businesses or nonprofits. These kind of, for lack of a better word, handouts don't come very often. So when we can be a blessing to whomever it is, like I said, so we have, if we have to shift, we'll, we'll go through the second round and see how that works. So we may have to do some shifting, recategorizing. Let's be prepared to do that, because I want to make sure the funds get used.
Yeah, you can vary your budget. You set that budget.
Right.
Yeah.
Was that, I had one question. Was fifteen thousand the, the limit on what they could get or could they get more than fifteen that one time?
Well, we, you had set aside a hundred thousand.
Hundred thousand.
When we looked at it, we tried to identify what a good point was.
Okay.
There is no magic.
Right.
You can say something else, but like I said, there were, there were three who did not lose fifteen thousand. So we were careful not to just establish some, you know, something of our own.
Right.
Or some ranking of some sort, but just say up to this amount. Or if you did not lose that amount, we'll give you what you lost. So I think there were maybe three, we had fourteen thousand, another maybe seven thousand, another maybe sixteen hundred.
You know, I just wondered, with all the businesses in Liberty, this was for the Liberty County and anyone could apply?
Yes, ma'am.
That wasn't that many.
That's what I was saying. I just wanted to make sure that...
Businesses that applied, but sometimes it's cumbersome finding not everything you need if you've done stored it.
Did you run across anybody that had a, a, how do you say it? Fifty thousand dollar loss?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Sure there was.
There were some that had over eighty thousand dollars.
Yes, sir, we had one eighty thousand.
One had eighty-one thousand dollars. That was taking up almost all of it.
Yeah.
Right, but, I mean, we're, we're only one vehicle.
We are.
You understand? So I, I would rather, you know, touch as many small businesses and nonprofits as possible than depleting it.
One.
Helping three or, or two businesses.
I agree. I agree. So I think they did a great job.
I'd like us to consider though, and maybe we're on the same, once we do the next round, if we have the same kind of outcome, then perhaps consider those who had a fifty grand loss, because those folk had, I mean, a bona fide loss, am I right? Once we've satisfied everybody, I'm with you. I'm with you. I'm with you. But maybe in the next round, we can, we consider those people who had a greater loss, we weren't able to help them to replenish their, their loss.
You know, the other thing too that happens is, and y'all remember this, that you've got about three more years to spend the money. So with whatever happens in the next coming year or whatever, I mean, you may have another impact.
I'm not going with it again.
I mean, I, I guess from my standpoint, I know with the, with the amount of businesses and nonprofits that we do have in Liberty County, I was just suspecting and hoping that we have more applicants that, that participated in this, this particular project.
Yeah.
And I, I just want to help as many as we can, you know.
But I'm reminded of, you know, just what they ran into a lot of times is record keeping.
That's right.
I remember the, instead of Heinzville and CDBG applications, I remember that we ran into that same thing. It's because of record keeping. Smaller organizations don't do in-depth record keeping. They're kind of mom and pop, you know, operation. So doesn't mean they don't do a good job, you know, but they just don't have the...
I would like...
Financial expertise.
From my perspective, I mean, usually the ones that need it won't ask for it. I mean, I give to a nonprofit and they haven't, they didn't receive nothing. They didn't ask for it. Sometimes there's people too proud to ask for it. And, I mean, I would like to see yourself that represents the board, another commissioner, Kim and Joey and, and Mr. Mosley, get together and decide people that you know, and, I mean, you and I both know that need five thousand dollars to make it. And go there and help them with their application, try to get them boosted. I mean, I, there's, there's folks that's out here every day that help, that, that you know that could do that, that could benefit from it, that's really and truly in need, but they won't, they won't ask. I mean, they just, there's, we grew up, we grew up in a time when we were too proud to ask. I mean, you know, so I know there's gonna be some money left over and there's gonna be another round of it and maybe that'll be something that we can address at the time, but it would be something that, I mean, I think about the ladies at the hospitals. I don't care, they had to pay daycare folks childcare just to come to work.
You can't leave it to them.
And, you know, that wasn't, they, we paid the hospital. Those folks probably made, and being stressed out as it is, so.
This is our first round, so learning process, work in progress, as they say. So I happened to listen to a little bit of Flemington's, they call it a workshop. They were doing the same thing, going over the applicants and so. I might go back and take some notes from them. You all might want to talk to Mayor Hawkins, because they had, they had organizations come in basically standing to say why they needed the funds, kind of thing, yeah. Kind of did that way, a little different route, but they did it that way. But my point is, some of the organizations who they awarded, I'd never heard of those people, but they were doing great work once they explained what they were doing. Worked with veterans and PTSD and all those kind of things that I never knew they were doing. But certainly in this time, you know, community we serve, we need all the help. A lot of it was mental health related, Mr. Brown. We all know that's a big topic now in Liberty County.
Yes, sir.
So touch bases, if you will, with them, just to make some notes.
How many people in this county died from COVID?
I don't, I don't know. I don't know the latest count. It's ongoing somewhat.
Mr. Chair, I guess, and Mr. Brown, can, can we make another suggestion? I guess piggybacking off of what Commissioner Water was talking about. If, if, if the reasons, if we, if we look at these reasons why eleven people were not approved because of the application process, is there any way possible, you know, we might could bring in Mrs. Clift or something to, to help with the small businesses? Because trust me, you know, a small business owner, I, I get it. You know, it's, it's very difficult to, you know, to keep your paperwork in line sometimes, you know? So if, if that, if that's the issue, is there any way possible we could set aside either some ARPA funds or professional service funds where we could present a class to help these people? Because obviously, that, that's a concern if we have eleven applicants out of the, what, twenty-five that were disqualified because of, of paperwork not being all the way together. And just like the ones with a business license, just because they don't have a business license, that doesn't necessarily mean they don't have a business, they just haven't...
They're illegal.
Right. But, but, I mean, no, and, and that's what I'm saying. So if, if that's the case, instead of just looking at them saying, well, well, you're illegal, let's, let's teach them about how you, you get a business license.
Walk them down there.
Right. I mean, trust me, a lot of people don't know. Seriously, especially if it's an at-home business.
And let's be fair, some do know.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
But, but you know, I'm not sure what, excuse me, what, what Services United Way provides as far as, you know, that's a good idea.
Right.
Education, those kind of things. They may do that kind of. They may. I, I know that they would, they helped them with the application if they needed help, but as far as trying to go into their business, they didn't. You know, you're right, they didn't do that.
Right.
And that's a small business education class.
Absolutely. Right. I mean, and, and trust me, it's needy. There's a whole lot of moving parts. Even if from, from that standpoint, if, even if it's not a financial contribution that, that we give a lot of these small businesses, if we, if we could just educate them.
And maybe they did some of that, we just don't know, but you, you guys can find that out.
Right. Or let's, let's just figure it out.
Okay. Sure.
All right. Good round, good first round. Good first round. We need a...
Motion in a second, please.
Chair, entertain a motion and we approve this first round of grants.
Go ahead, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Second.
Motion and second. We approve the first round of grants with the recommendations, Mr. Brown, Mr. Mosley. You guys follow up on those. We'll help out where we can. Any further discussions? All in favor, raise your right hand, please. All right. Good job, Commissioners, we've done it, first round.
And the next one we'll be coming to you with, or is, or on that section, dealing with educational assistance out there that y'all allocated money for. We're trying to work through the ARPA required specifics of what those businesses will need to be able to produce so that we can inform them as they apply what their requirements will be.
Okay.
So...
But of those eleven businesses, not, oh, seven of them did not have an income loss.
Okay, so they just didn't qualify. Right. Right. Paperwork, right. Okay. We understand. Got to be consistent, we understand. Yeah. All righty. Splosh seven projects.
So I didn't know whether you want to take your coats off, shawls or whatever you had. So we got a pretty tight schedule for this. Actually, as y'all know, we've had our first meetings, official called meeting with chief elected officials is required by law to talk about an intergovernmental contract which allows the tax to be a six-year tax if you do that. We have a follow-up meeting with them scheduled, in fact, for next week. They have been asked to go back, actually for their second time, and put together a list of projects that they would like to see done. So Ms. Kim's gonna drive. I will get over here so I won't be in the way. Basically, the tax is anticipated to bring in about sixty-nine million dollars over that six-year period of time. Kim, if you can scroll to the bottom or kind of halfway in between, if you remember what was done last time, you identified your countywide community impact projects up top. Those are called tier one projects. Those are the ones that are expected to impact the total community as a whole without attribution to any specific city element or specific area of the county. These are true countywide projects. That amount was calculated and then below that was an amount to be dispersed, okay? And so in the amounts that were left over, so to speak, after those tier one projects were established, those amounts are listed down below. That is where each municipality and commission grouped their road projects specifically for the commission your road projects. The other cities, however, were given some of those monies to do their individual projects. So the referendums were pretty broad in those areas. For instance, City of Riceboro wanted to be able to use some of their money for possible water sewer improvements or expansion. And so the referendum said, and a certain percentage to the City of Riceboro to do certain capital improvements, including XXX. Midway was another example. Midway's referendum, for their little portion of the referendum, said they're, they're expected to achieve X amount of dollars or a certain percentage over the six-year period for certain capital improvements, including public safety equipment, city hall, some of those type things. So wherever they chose to use those monies, their projects were in those remaining amounts at the bottom. With the exception, if you'll scroll back up, Kim, with the exception of public safety vehicles, those were considered countywide type projects for those public safety agencies that had a police department, they were allocated a certain sum in the first tax. What we've done at this point is obviously gotten together and looked at some things that we know were on your capital list. We also combined that with things that you already have an obligation to pay. And so we threw some things in there. Justice center debt, midcoast debt, obviously continues there. There's an allocation for public safety, which in this case is pulled from your CIP program, which is, is where a lot of these come from. And that's the reason you do your CIP up front, the departments do. That one public safety area there is a holding place for the EMS administrative building, possibly that's been requested. It's also for the upgrades to the EMA and nine-one-one building that have to be done for sleeping quarters and more room for the batteries and storage and everything for the nine-one-one gear. And it's also a little bit of public safety allotment for one other piece, excuse me, for the hardware and software this required for the nine-one-one upgrade. That's correct. Thank you, Kim. The other is a placeholder for the same amount as a starting point for recreation. Liberty County Fire EMS station, that's actually the six-year financing that you'll have to pay on those bonds. Absent of solid waste that you mentioned earlier. So that is a have-to-do. That is the actual amount. A placeholder in there, just the same amount again for historic cultural as a starting point. We did do a, Kim did do a bond run this afternoon based on anticipated costs of the Health Department building financed over six years. And the portion it would occupy to a bond financing for your public safety or your public works facility, that would be the amount that would be due if you chose to put this in the splash, to pay your debt on that. The Industrial Authority, again, a placeholder, they haven't actually come to us and asked for money. Drainage was what we have to do to fund the drainage equipment for the Peacock Canal project. That is the same amount that was allocated in the past splash. Ambulances, to be able to buy one ambulance a year, it's a little bit more than it was last time because the ambulances have gone up, as you're aware. County safety vehicles, which are basically where we make the allocation to buy the help with the patrol cars, as is Heinzel and Midway and Waltoville. You see an allocation in there again for freight connector improvements. This would be to add to the amount that's in there to do the downtown work on highway, current highway one nineteen in the city of Waltoville as part of that project. The Regional Medical Center had a holding spot last time, has indicated they've got some equipment needs over there. So there, there's been some money put in that line item for consideration. There is your six-year financing cost on your public works facility if you choose to do a bond issue for that. And in saying that, obviously for those things, and we talked about that a minute ago, Mr. Davis was here, if you obviously choose not to put those on the splash, then you'll need to consider those in your general fund through your tax, property tax revenues and other sources to fund those projects. These are some other projects. We did, we did reach out, even though they're going to get their detailed lists, the cities are now, we reached out to the City of Heinzel, actually had a meeting and asked them if they had anything, all the cities that they want to do. The city was specific and came back to us with a few projects that you see on there. The others are projects that, that y'all have talked about, that we quite honestly either haven't been designed yet, but we put them a holding place in, in case you want to put some things in there. Jail, election facility, possibly more money for these exit seventy-six projects that you see. It's about a twenty-eight million dollar project down there. Public Works is one, event center, obviously has been discussed to try to do that. The Ryan Street, Main Street Improvement Project carries the streetscape all the way out to highway eighty-four and connects into Bryant Commons. The Heinzel Fire Station that they're doing, they've indicated that any of us in a mound on any of these indicated they would like to try to get that into the splash somewhere. Would go either under their projects at the bottom or as a, as a community-wide project. Coroner Facility, don't really know how much, you know, we don't have any money allocated due to the design or any land acquisition or anything there. And of course, program management, which occupies four percent, that's our cost for managing the tax over six years, our administrative overhead costs. Four percent flow, it's usually around a ten percent figure, but that four percent gets applied to the sixty-nine million dollars as a whole. And then whatever you come up, whatever is decided on the tier one stuff at the top, whatever's in the bottom will fall out as a percentage distribution and those percentages are basically along the same lines as the LCPC distributions that are done, in what everybody pays in for, which are almost the same as the current local option sales tax distribution percentages. They're not far off. That's a lot of hot air and I apologize, but that, that's kind of a, you know, hey, look, there's other, I would tell you, and even this is y'all's, obviously y'all's decision of how you want to fund these projects that are up there. We just simply knew what projects had been discussed or asked for some input from some, for instance, City of Heinzel and other cities, and we listed what we heard. So where you end up allocating, what is obviously strictly up to the board. The Board of Commissioners will be the ones that call... The Board of Commissioners will be the ones that call for the referendum to occur, which will happen in November. And so we really need to have these projects finalized and you need to take action to actually call for that and adopt the intergovernmental agreement in July. So the timeframe is, is pretty short. We have to give the notice for advertisement for the election no later than the 1st of August, by law. So that's kind of the task before you.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Mr. Brown, can you go back to allocation for the county?
Now, now, don't let me confuse you. Don't let me confuse you.
Okay.
So here's what we did, and I'm glad you brought that up. Kim was fixing to probably throw something at me. What we did, or what I asked her to do with the numbers is this. The, the percentage that those projects allocated under the current tax that you've got was about 36%, 35.5 or 35.6 actually, of the total take of $54 million. So all we did is say, if it's gonna generate 69, let's, let's as a starting point, allocate about the same percentage for the stuff below. Now whether that stays that, that's totally up to you and the other, other, but, but don't let me, that is not your current number. That's taking the same percentage and applying it to 69 million instead of 54, is what it is. And it'll actually generate for the county... Probably a little less than this because this is my, my Kim final list sheet. Well, have you got the old, the current? That's what I was gonna see. What the current...
Sales tax six?
Yes. The current, I got it right here, Kim. The current allocation under, under six, it'll generate more than this because the tax is up, but it's 33.51% expected to bring in $6.799 million to the county that you can use for your roads. So if you stuck to the same percentage, basically the same percentage, instead of, instead of generating roughly 6.8 million, it would generate more like 8.3 million.
And the reason why I asked that question, I mean, because I think everyone up here knows now that the area that I represent has gotten larger than what it was and I have a total of 34 miles of dirt roads. And with it almost being a million dollars to do a mile of road, I'm not, you know, too pleased with what I see right now with those numbers. I mean, uh...
And you know, Commissioner Stevens, y'all certainly know this. We didn't dare try to delve into how you might split your funds. We were just, yeah, we've, uh... But, but again, and this may not even be anything. It's just to give you a start.
Right, okay.
Is all it is.
We don't, we don't have to take any action tonight?
Well, we've got our meeting...
Because I can't hardly even see that. I would like to have a hard copy.
I'm sorry.
Kind of go over that.
Right. And then light it...
To go to review it.
He'll come out of there.
And then line item 25? I could barely see that one either.
Uh, Event Center. Yeah, it has nothing allocated because we don't know how much it might cost or what you might want to do. But that's, that's something that you've got to...
Right, it's a placeholder.
Yes, or...
Right, I, I definitely...
Yes, or... We, we took anything we had heard you say or that was on your capital list and created a holding spot for it so that you could consider allocation.
I'm, I'm just happy to see it on the list. It's on time coming.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Joey, hold up. Okay, so now, the ones that's got a cost beside it, that, that cost totals, what is it? 20?
The total cost...
That's total cost there?
Is 68. Now, if I were to take this 25, you know, if I took the 25 million out and said, okay, we don't know yet what we're gonna allocate to everybody else, you're at 43. What we said was, well, we're gonna get, we're gonna start where we did last sales tax six with around the same percentage, which would be somewhere in 25 million. This doesn't have to be 25 million. But right now, with all of these figures here plus the 25 million that's allocated down here, you're at 68.7.
Okay.
Budgeted to bring in 69, it's looking kind of tough for these things right here. Unless you tweak this.
And another question...
Oh, we're, we're gonna tweak.
On, on number 20?
Yes, sir.
Not, not 20.
I've been very patient.
Didn't one of them had a Hinesville Public Works?
It did. They, they expressed to us they'd like to put a little money in there to expand that shop area. That that's what they had been discussing out there. Was actually, I believe...
They're going up toward the sky.
No, sir. I believe and the chairman...
Got a land block over there.
The chairman can correct me if I'm wrong. It was for expansion across railroad tracks or some more land for layout.
Some more land or something, yeah.
That's what they expressed.
A whole nother expansion, but I mean, at a whole nother location because that, you got, you got the railroad track, you got the ditch, you got the state highway. I mean, it's, it's, it looks like a yield sign, you can't go nowhere.
Yeah, it wasn't that side, it was a, it'd be an additional side.
Well, okay, so that's not an expansion. But it'd be...
Well, but yeah.
Maybe it's a play on words.
Yes, sir, and you're supposed to come back with some more definitive things for us next week as far as their list and the cities, all of the cities, as a matter of fact, to come back with that. What we will do, Kim, if you'll scroll back up real quickly, again, just, just to, just to do this, is we'll go through and we will definitely tell you, number one, which are already obligated for. That, again, that doesn't mean you gotta pay them out of this sales tax. I know Commissioner Jones mentioned that one day. I'm not advocating one way or another. But as y'all talked that night, what I do remember is you're gonna pay it somehow. So if you don't pay it through the sales tax, you're gonna pay it through your property stuff. Right? So, so we'll go through and we'll list the ones you're already obligated for or that we already know you've got in progress that are gonna be funded somehow. And what we'll do is we'll run a six-year schedule on what your payments would be on those in case you finance them. Because you definitely won't pay them straight out. I mean, the Health Department alone, even though it's getting some ARPA money, is, is about 11 and a half million dollar project. The Road Department is almost 8 million. So the chances of paying it all off in one tax?
No.
It would, it would take too much out of kitty for you to do that.
This represents six years of a 20-year...
Right, okay.
Well, Joey, how about scroll on up a little bit more, Kim, if you would? And let's look at the cities again. Their portion right there?
Mm-hmm.
You're saying that, that there's 1.100 for Allenhurst? Do, do you know what Hinesville is getting now?
About the same amount.
I do.
About the same amount.
Is that the same percentage?
Yes.
Yeah, about the same amount now.
Well, they're getting, um, out of this tax, they were expected to yield for some of their projects $10 million.
Well, then what give, I mean, Flemington has grown bigger right now than Waltoville.
Yeah, Flemington is...
So what are we gonna do when they come to us and say, hey, I'm interested in getting a little bit more money?
Yeah, Flemington, exactly. And, and Flem, I, I, well, it's just the method we used. I, I didn't envision that they would want to go down in any money that they would want to receive from the tax. And just as a starting point, we said, let's just allocate the same percentage and see what happens. But the other thing that comes to my mind too, though, that will impact this a little bit is we're renegotiating the lost and I think we'll probably hear at the meeting next week, let's use those new percentages. So these new percentages may change anyway as far as any remainder money you give them.
Up or down?
It'll, oh, ours will go down, theirs will go up because they had more population. So if the distribution is done based on the same, that's what'll happen.
And we've asked the, the cities and so far they seem receptive. You know, when they make their request, to make bona fide requests based on future plans for their respective cities, not just, I want $2 million, I have $2 million. What project do you have and what's the projected cost of that project? And they've been, thus far, they've been cooperative with that. So we hadn't seen their final list yet, you know? But they mentioned some, some tentative projects. But, but they seem to have bought into the fact that, you know, the way we did it last time, I remember Commissioner Walton, you specifically asked if we give Allenhurst a little something to help them out with. And even, even they came forward with just what, some street paving? That's all they've said they're gonna need.
Sidewalks and street.
Yeah, so... So, so I appreciate every city thus far, thus far being receptive and being a team player, yes, I would say. So not asking for money they're not gonna use, but asking for funds that they will attach to some projects they have for their cities.
But also, Mr. Chairman, I hear what you're saying, but let's not forget our own Board of Commissioners up here. You know, and our needs also.
Yeah, I mean, you told...
I'm talking about, you know where I'm going, I think you do. Roads. Got to have, I have got to have more money for roads to satisfy the people down in District 1, who lives in Liberty County.
Because if you, Commissioner Stevens, if you go back, if they used the 33.51 that's on 8 million, divided by nine, if we did that, it's, it's not enough.
No, it's not enough money.
Definitely not enough. If we divided it that way, I don't know how we're gonna do it. But I haven't been able to pave the road and I don't think you have. It just, it just won't do it.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Um, and I've had this discussion with you, my fellow Commissioners. I guess piggybacking on what Commissioner Stevens and Commissioner Thrift were saying, I guess I would be included in that bunch that has the dirt road issue. And the allocation that we got or that I came in on last year, it's a greater deal of money, but as far as taking care of what needs doing yesterday, and in my case, years ago, from my, hearing from my constituents that what we were allocated from the last round of spending or collections, it's not adequate to really do what I'm being asked to do as far as dirt roads are concerned. And I would personally like to see a bigger cut to the districts or however we allocate it, like we done last time. But I'm sure we could reshuffle things around. But the dirt roads are a big issue in the district I represent and the numbers I see now probably is just a drop in the bucket for the work, amount of work that I know needs doing in District 4. So we got a lot of work to do as far as the numbers go.
Yes, sir, I agree. And Kim, if you'll scroll back up real quick for me, and again, y'all are aware of this, but by context, those projects, for instance, I know you're not fixing to do this, but those, let's say that you choose not to fund the Health Department. You're not gonna do that. But as, as an example, as an example, let's say you, you don't choose to do the Public Works Facility maybe through that. And Kim, that number that's allocated in there right now under Public Works is 3.5 million. Based on your current digest, last year's digest, which we know will change some this year, you'd be talking about increasing your millage rate about a half a mil just to make your bond payments each year in that project, South Georgia math. Don't get me too hard. She hates when I do that. But so you're just gonna have to make it up in millage to the property owners, however you choose to fund those. And it is certainly up to y'all what you want to do.
Mr. Chairman, and that's probably the last option we would like to consider. I mean, raising millage rates when we got millions before us. So, and I know a bunch of these projects are vital projects. We are already committed to a bunch of them. And that's understandable, those, those that are necessary. Some of the others, but even the whole process, I would think that the last thing I would like to hear or any of my constituents would like to hear is something about raising millage rates for when we have the money in hand or will have. So raising the millage rates probably is not an option unless it's necessary. And from the numbers I see, all we'd have to do is just come up with a more creative way to spend it.
Or create it.
The millage rates, raising the millage rates is nothing that I would want to consider unless it was absolutely necessary.
So what we'll do is we'll go through here and definitely give you a printout. We'll highlight those things you're already obligated for on there, for you on that sheet. If you, if you can, if you can work on those, we'll give you a product out. And then in the mid-month meeting, we will have had that second meeting with the cities. And you, you, just keep in mind, you've got to really approve this no later than the 1st of June. Those intergovernmental agreements need to be dispersed to those communities and to you to, to sign. So nothing but a starting point for you.
Mr. Chairman.
Joey, Joey, is, is that, that's just an Excel spreadsheet there?
It is.
Yeah, I mean, it's sort of, if we can get, can we get a copy of that?
Sure, absolutely.
And, and Kim, and she's highlighting the ones that we are obligated?
Yes, so these, these two here are already bonds that you paid and those payments are already being charged to splash. This will completely pay off the Justice Center.
Yep. We need that.
That's great.
We need that.
Then we're gonna, then we're gonna get some roads.
Epic dance, Cincinnati. It's really not.
This will not be off.
It's really not.
But it will be...
We, 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 we put millions and millions of dollars in.
It will not pay off with public safety. But it is six years.
From the jail to everything.
What, what is that?
We, we have nothing to get back to.
The third one, Kim, what did you say that was now, the fire station?
That's your fire station EMS.
Revenue generator project here?
Right, okay.
That's a 12 and a half million.
Okay, so those three.
All that money's going to Chatham County. That, that's the part that I'm trying to get everybody to realize. Let's, let's focus on boosting the sales tax. It's because it's here, it's just leaving out.
Okay, and so those are the three, Kim?
Those are the three that...
It goes to Savannah, Chatham County every weekend.
The debt service, if you don't fund, they will go into the general fund and you will have to increase.
Okay. Yeah, if...
So I highlight those three.
Yeah, and just send that, send that to us and we'll...
Yeah, and then the, the others that we'll get together and include are those that are under design right now, i.e. Public Works. Because you know you're gonna do that, right?
Yes.
We need to put a placeholder in those. I mean, it's, it's the projects you've already obligated to do. We'll, we'll note those.
Make that another color, Kim, the ones that... Public Works?
We'll do that. Kim, I'll get with you.
Yeah, and, and just kind of, you know.
We'll put some notes with.
The ones that, um.
Yes, sir, we will.
That we kinda absolutely, positively.
Can't live without it.
Gonna have to have, and then we could kinda work around the rest of the stuff.
Sure, be glad to.
And, y'all, what do you all think, you know, when I saw, uh, Kim, I think Kim and Kim's projection of sixty-nine million, I think, God, why don't I just make it seventy? You know?
And, and that's what I was on X, is, is this the same conservative number that, that you, you shot for last, hey, I see your face.
Okay, so, in my opinion, we grew it more than we did last time, but we were reluctant to grow it at double-digit figures that we've seen in the last, you know, two to three years, only because we're not sure that double-digit will sustain for six years. Now, we do believe it will continue to grow, as it has, but we felt like that was progressively conservative.
I like you, I like you.
I like that. And, and we had an outside source run it also.
Right.
Trey ran it, uh, when, from the bond underwriting standpoint, so he.
Did he run it? Okay.
But, uh, another question, I know in the past we discussed, uh, the Justice Center, and I know for, uh, for at least the Justice Center, that we weren't gonna pay it all off on this splash, we were gonna pay a portion of it off on the, on the next one?
No, that's, um, Rite Army Airfield. We knew the one we're in now, you mean, or this upcoming one?
This upcoming one.
That's when it'll be paid off. We never anticipated it to be paid off in self-tax today.
No, take three.
It was gonna pay one more.
I thought, I thought it was gonna take one more after that.
No.
Mm-mm, just one more.
We went back and refinanced and.
So, so, I, I guess the question I have, that twelve-point-nine-one, there's no adjustment on that?
Well, these, these fall out based on the amount you put in. So if I come down here and I put, you know, um.
Line item twenty-five. No, no.
The others change.
No, Kim, if, if you don't play with one, play, play with, uh, line item twenty-five, if you can, please.
Okay. So if I go in here and say I put seventy-seven million five hundred thousand.
Oh, yeah.
Okay? Now, all of a sudden, this becomes eleven point four, because now you're taking up more space. These are functions of what this is to the sixty-nine million, and as long as these have zeros, you know, that shows twelve. But as soon as I start putting amounts in here, um, you know, then all of a sudden that changes. If I go in here and say, oh, your election's building, that's another five million, all of a sudden, you know, this now takes up ten percent of the sixty-nine million.
Okay.
These are, these are just, they fall out when you put this in here.
Right, but that eight-point-six.
It's a hard number, 'cause your bonds.
I understand.
Yeah.
Right.
You can't ref.
But, but, right, that, that eight-point, that, is that, man, my eyes getting bad. That's eight-point-eight?
Small.
Eight-point-eight.
So that eight-point-eight is non-negotiable, correct?
Right.
That's what it is?
Those ones in the highlight, that's.
Absolutely.
Do regardless.
Do you really have an event center or a paved road?
Is that a trick question?
I, no, that's a, that's a question.
I, I, I mean, but, but, I'm, I'm, I'm glad that was mentioned, 'cause at the end of the day, if, if, if we figure out some type of more revenue generating, that sixty-nine could go up to seventy-one or seventy-two.
You could?
Right.
And if you did, let's just say you did seventy-one. Now, all of a sudden, uh.
'Cause be honest with you, one, one of the main reasons why, why, uh, this last splash six was higher than what we projected was Olga Thornt Square.
Honestly, I think one of the big reasons is when we started taxing online sales.
And that too.
Yeah.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
And then I think by the third year, those online sales that started getting taxed.
Yeah.
Right.
Millions of dollars out losing.
And we're gonna, we'll work with the sixty-nine, we'll go in there and put those, and then in the mid-month, we'll come back again, and.
Once we hear back from the cities left.
Once we get back from the cities.
Final list.
We'll, we'll come a final list, and just remember, in order to get the intergovernmental agreement to make it a six-year tax, you, you, you have to have the intergovernmental agreement in place, so you have to have, really, the city of Heinzville involved. They occupy the remaining share of the population of the county. Having all the others without Heinzville will not give you the proportionate share you need to do the intergovernmental agreement. So, so that is, you know, you just need to, just, just not suggest anything to you, but you know that.
Okay.
Okay. Just, just get that to us.
We'll get that right out.
Okay.
Gary, so you say it's gonna be a two-story?
It's gonna have to, it's gonna have to be two-story, if they wanna expand it.
Kim, um, scroll down to the cities again before you. I just wanted to remind us, two things I wanna say. One is that, you know, their requests may be less than these, so that those numbers could change, you know, so it will give us more room to put toward, you know.
And you know, in the call, I remember saying, it said, that six, that it was, when they came and said, look, to make it work, take that off ours.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I'm not sure, though, with their growth, it could actually.
Yeah. City of Heinzville gave up some, yeah, those things could change.
Kim, just, just so we do this, um, let's, let's save this one, but let's also create a sheet that does proportionate breakout on a bottom base to the new census proportions, and, and that'll, you know, I have an idea that's coming. Yes, ma'am. Uh-huh, I have, I have an idea that's coming up this week.
And as, um, duh, 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 this needs to be, 'cause they're gonna write the language for the referendum where there's flexibility, because, um, if some projected developments come to Liberty County, they could help us to, help us greatly with the, with the.
Yeah, the only ones, of course, won't have flexibility would be the items that are specific.
Right.
Tier-one projects.
Yes.
And then there's a process, obviously, if one of those doesn't come to fruition, that there's a process for abandonment of that project through public hearing.
Yeah.
Uh, and using those funds for something else, so.
You know, I mean, thinking about, you know, we were talking with some of our friends in DC about some help with some of these projects, so, you know, if that comes in, then, you know, we'd have more room to do other stuff with, but we're working at it at every angle, I promise you. We're working at it at every angle, I promise you. Let me say this too, very quickly, my, my Commissioners have dirt roads, uh, in, in some discussion, ACCG, uh, one neighboring county has over a hundred miles of dirt roads, just sat the table talking the other day. Neighboring county, over a hundred miles of dirt roads. Yeah, and it's kinda like what you all say, there's some people who don't want theirs paved.
Yeah.
And there's some that, and, but they do, they do a priority list, they, they don't do district, they just do, okay, they let the city, the county engineer prioritize it, and they follow the recommendation. We used to do that, remember? And we got away from that, we, you know, kinda let each Commissioner have their own funds, so, there are different ways of doing it, but I just wanna let you know that there's neighboring county over a hundred miles, you know, of dirt roads they have.
But, Mr. Chairman, on, on the dirt roads, when, when we did it that way, the way that you just described.
Mm-hmm.
When we did it that way, um, how much progress did we make then?
That's a good, that's a good, uh.
It was the same.
That's a good question. To compare, were we able to make more progress doing it that way as versus what we're doing now?
Well, I don't know, we'd have to go back.
Actually, the cost, the, the cost has prohibited us from.
Yeah.
Doing anymore.
Yeah.
E- either way you look at it, the cost is the issue.
So, so, so.
Well, I, I, I know when I, when I first got on in two thousand eight, and I think we were distributing the, the funds based on some calculation, whatever that calculation was.
It was based on the amount of money.
But, but I, but I, um, I paved one, okay, and then I paved another one, and then I paved another one, and, um, you know, getting ready to pave another one. Um, with the, with the new formula and the old formula, you know, I just did it. Yeah, I mean, there's nothing magical about it. You, you get a road, and you send Trenton down there, and next thing you know, it's, it's paved.
Yeah, Commissioner Jones, I mean, Stevens, he, tonight has got one paved, and it, and he never had to spin a dime on it.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Really, I mean, it's, it's nearly halfway.
So keep, keep all that in mind as we, as we, um, and, and, and don't forget, now, we do have T-splots on our side this time.
And I, I was gonna say, let, let's, let's look at T-splots, and then.
T-splots help us out too.
With all the respect, if we have sixty or seventy miles of roads, and it's on cost a million dollars for a mile, this can't be the only function that we look at to pave a road. You know, I mean, we're, we're really just trying to start thinking outside the box to look at how, how we tackle that, in my opinion.
I'll close this before we go, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Before we go to executive session?
Yes, sir.
Um, I read, uh, today Savannah paper has this, and it's good for my friends from, from the east, good to see y'all. Um, it's, Effingham County's talking about their growth, and here's what, um, one of their county leaders said. He said, having all the hou- house tops is good, but if you don't bring in development and commercial to offset that, you are in trouble.
Exactly.
That's what he said. He said, house tops, that's good, he said, but if you don't have some commercial and development to bring in, bring, because they, they require a lot less, they bring in income, they don't, you know, but house tops, they require services, and there's services and services. So he said, if you don't balance it, you are in trouble.
Tax.
You're in trouble, and I, you know, that's a wake-up call for Liberty County, 'cause we building houses like crazy. Yeah, but we better work, make sure we work to bring in, you know.
We, we've got them, Mr. Chairman, but I can tell you, the, I went this morning to a place, and, and they didn't open up till six o'clock, and they've always been open twenty-four hours a day, and they said that they close at six o'clock now.
Yeah.
So, I mean, there's businesses that, that you have, that the employees.
The staffing.
They'll tell you right now, they're not working.
Staffing, yeah.
They said there's more money for them to stay at the house. That's one of our biggest issues right now.
Yes.
Now, I don't know how we'll ever.
Nationwide.
Change it, change it around, but.
Get it back to where it was, I don't know if it's gonna happen.
I don't either. All right. For a second time, Chair, turn the motion, I say, before we go to executive session, anything else with?
Just a couple reminders, um, budget workshop, uh, on the tenth, that's this week, uh, twelve, starting at twelve o'clock.
The fifth.
Thursday.
The fifth is Thursday.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, I got next week, I'm sorry, I'm looking, and then we, then we've got actually one on the tenth, I believe, and one on the twelfth.
Right.
Right?
Yeah.
Budget meeting.
Yeah. We get extra money for that.
And there's also, uh, the Board of Assessors, I think y'all were probably copied on that mail, the Board of Assessors had requested a joint meeting of the boards, and so right now, that's scheduled for, uh, the tenth, next Tuesday, at eleven o'clock.
Tenth, eleven, okay.
And I'll be sending out a reminder.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
So, so that's two things on the tenth.
Commissioner Jones, I confirmed that date of the, what, twelve?
They use that for the budget here and again?
Uh, the, I don't have that on my calendar, but.
This, the fifth.
The fifth, this week, this Thursday.
From twelve to five.
And then you've got one on the tenth, and one on the twelfth, that was on that schedule.
That's the.
Tenth, mm-hmm.
That's the, that's the meeting, right?
All three of them starts, all, all three of them starts at twelve.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I had, I had a twelfth down there at two o'clock, did we change that?
No.
Okay, we'll, we'll confirm that.
I got the twelfth at twelve o'clock.
I had twelve.
We'll, we'll confirm that with you.
But I know this Thursday is twelve to five.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Uh, let's not, for those who can attend, the, uh, honoring at the Bribery Park for Mr. Rutherford on the fifteenth at three o'clock.
Thank you.
Fifteenth?
On the fifteenth at three o'clock.
Sunday.
It's on Sunday.
Sunday, okay.
Yeah, and, uh, Joey, I, um, I got, saw an email from Maria about the, the board appointments, I think she said she was waiting on something from, maybe it was LCPC or something, that, um, and she sent it out at, at about two o'clock, but, um, and, and we got this package, so, um, I guess on the next agenda, if we got some, um, some appointments, we, we can make it.
Okay.
On the next meeting, Matt.
Okay. All right, sir, that'd be fine.
I, I, I just hate that, um, that we couldn't do it tonight, I mean, that's, we, we kinda getting slack a little bit, slack a little bit.
You.
But, but, but I, I got the email.
Slacking on there.
She didn't, she didn't, she didn't get it to us till two o'clock. That's why, you know.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I think.
Because if it was at one, y'all would be done.
If it was at one-thirty.
Chairman, I think if they had got it last week, they wouldn't be ready.
But it was actually two-twenty-one.
Something else, sir?
Uh, executive session for personnel and land acquisition.
That's it, all right. Chair, turn the motion, that we, uh, go into the next session to discuss land acquisition.
Go move.
Second, all in favor?
All right. Let's go get it out.
Chair Tenement motion to come out of the second session back in the regular session.
So move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand. There be nothing to report chair tenement motion to adjourn.
We move.
Second? All in favor?